I know. I was there then.
Okay, six o'clock, and we're gonna bring to order the January 23, 2023, City Council meeting, and we will begin with roll call. Ladies, Jenny?
Walters?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
And then I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, we have one correction to the agenda that needs to be made. Under Business Item C, who are Engineering Standard Agreement for Consulting Services, that amount is incorrect, and it should be $374,000. So if you could get a motion in a second with that correction to the agenda.
Okay, so we'll ask for a motion in a second to that correction to the agenda from 753 to $374,000 under Business Items C.
This is the last one.
A second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call on that specific thing?
Just the overall motion.
Okay, so then we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on to public hearings then. It's time to close the public hearing. Time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed amendment to the Future Land Use Map in the 2016 Polk City Comprehensive Plan. When was the notice published?
January 13.
Any written comments received for or against the proposed amendment?
No, sir.
This time, I would like staff to provide a report, and I understand that is Kathleen or Travis. Looks like Travis.
I can.
We'll have the developer present first, and then I'll follow up.
Okay.
Evening, everyone. Erin Ollendike. So we'll assign advantage. My address is 4221 North West Burbank Dale Drive in Burbank Dale. Here tonight on behalf of the developer and owner of this project, Terrible Ventures LLC. We are here for the next two items, which is to request modifications to the comprehensive plan and the integrity zone, approximately 78 acres, and it's located... I'm not able to hold this, but it's located at the intersection of 126th and Sheldon Wolf Drive in the southeast corner. We're proposing to modify land uses and zoning to approximately 20, just shy of 29 acres of commercial along 126th, light industrial in the southwest corner, and then approximately 25 acres of multi-family in that southeast corner. I guess with that, if you have to answer any questions, which might happen?
Yeah, so I sort of the academy that comes with commercial brings us into the high-density part of residential that we've tried to avoid for the most part. You just gotta talk about some of those plans. Maybe the timing, or quite honestly, which part is driving conversations, or where... Maybe it's all together too, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think there's no specific users signed up this time for this property, but this, you know, 126th goes all the way to the interstate, it's the El Carte exit, so see this being kind of a commercial corridor as it will intersect with two major ways, because, you know, this takes you out of the A's into Polk City to the interstate, so...
And for council's consideration as well, the previous uses for this parcel in the comprehensive plan was mixed use, as well as some other higher-density residential uses. So this is in the same general character of what the previous comprehensive plan is, and we as the engineer would agree that this really helps further vision of what the comprehensive plan has for this quarter. So the amount that's changing to the high-density, to R3, was what, to the 27 acres? That was a horribly phrased question.
So I think the comp plan did show some low-density residential down in this corner, and then it had some medium residential, medium-density residential, and then commercial or mixed use.
It was mixed use, which is in your comp plan is the commercial first floor apartment flat style.
Yeah, that was helpful, you know, because, yeah, when we see higher density, that, you know, is something to consider, but I don't know, you know, units-wise, but there, when I, one of these pages shows mixed use, medium, and low, and it looks like there was a lot more maybe room for residential, so I think this does pull in the commercial that we keep wanting to have here, add some density, but maybe not a lot more total units, would that be fair to say Travis?
Yes, and from a utility standpoint, from a sewer standpoint, that kind of thing, it really fits the character of what we kind of visioned for this parcel in terms of services. Were there any conflicts with the existing zoning land uses out there in comparison to what you're proposing, any residential or whatever?
It's all either in the county or ag.
The only other, the only adjoining property that is currently in the city of Polk City is the smaller Bourbon Farms LLC piece to the west, and it is A1, and Bob Burrows has a section of his own, which is, that's a snapshot of time, but...
Other questions? Thank you very much. So is there anyone here who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed amendment? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
I can.
Roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So then we'll move on to I, or 1, A1, the Resolution 2023-04, to amend the 2016 Polk City Comprehensive Plan by Updating the Future Land Use Map. And I'll ask for a motion, please.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to B then, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed rezoning request for gateway crossings. Jenny, when was the notice published?
January 13.
Any written comments received for or against the proposed rezoning?
No, sir.
And then I believe we have a report.
So I will add to the information that was kind of presented in the Future Land Use Plan presentation, that within this parcel, the proposal is switching from A1 to the commercial districts along 126th and M1 restricted zoning, which essentially disallows mini-storage and outdoor recreation storage, basically to promote non-storage-related industrial uses, and then a portion of that M1 district that be unrestricted, basically anything that falls under zoning regulations for the M1 district is allowed in that parcel. The developer on their concept plan has shown the intention and has provided adequate space for the required buffers between various uses of R3, M1, and C2, as well as buffers along the outside of the property to buffer from the adjoining uses illustrated in the comp.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed rezoning? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. Roll call?
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
We'll then move on to number 1 under B, First Reading of Ordinance 2023-2000, rezoning gateway crossings from A1 to C2, 28.96 acres, M1 restricted, 16.70 acres, and M1, 7.5 acres, R3, 27.83 acres. Can I have a motion, please?
I move.
Sorry. Roll call?
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll move on to Item 5, which is a presentation, Polk City Friends of the Parks presenting the city $10,000 for shade structure at Leonard Park.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jessica Fow. I'm the president of Polk City Friends of the Parks. I'm here with my vice president, Sarah Jur. Some of the other board members in the audience, Monica Converse, Aaron Knox, and Anderson Trion. So January marks one year of us being a nonprofit, and our mission is to enhance, grow, ride, sustain old parks, trails, and green spaces for the benefit of the entire community. We're doing that through fundraising and then giving it directly back into the city, the Parks and Recreation Department. So when we began a year ago, we brainstormed events, ways we can make an impact, and goals to work towards, decided our first goal would be a shade structure at Leonard Park. It's a favorite among kids, and there's nowhere really to like sit as a parent under some shade and maybe host a birthday party, so with that goal in mind, we threw a couple of events. We did an Earth Day 5K, a lunch party, a party in the park at Leonard Park, and then we did a bike ride in October that coincided with Fall Fest. So the turnouts were great for our first-time events, and over the course of the whole last year, through event registration, corporate sponsorships, and general donations, we raised $12,000. So we're here today to formally give the city and the Parks and Recreation Department $10,000 of that to purchase and install the shade structure at Leonard Park.
We have a giant check.
Fine check, and we'd like to take a picture if we can, so...
Mayor, would you like to be in the photo?
I'm more than happy to. More than happy to represent the city. Well, if we do it here, the council sort of behind us.
Gee, did you take a picture?
Let's stand behind.
I'll go on in.
Everybody ready? Can we move that chair, though? Sorry.
Nope.
Okay, now is everybody ready? One, two, three. I took a few.
Thank you.
Did you guys have any questions for me?
There you go. I do, actually. So thank you, first of all, for not just this, but launching of the group and everything. I am curious, and I don't know how much specific research you did into the shades, but we've talked about them for the festival as either temporary or something that's, you know, less permanent than up and it stays up. Do you know if you're gonna counter anything like that in terms of something that could be either used on a temporary basis or is more flexible, I guess?
Well, so what we purchase is more of a permanent one. It'll come down in the winter, but otherwise the posts and stuff are permanent.
Okay.
Jason, do you have any?
I haven't done any other research of like...
Okay.
Otherwise, you can take up and down.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I mean, the support raises are footers, poured concrete base, so the shade structure itself that is what comes down in the winter. In terms of something that's a little bit more temporary, there are options out there. I couldn't tell you a price at this moment, but this project anticipated the structure was about eight, and we anticipate two in terms of concrete work.
Okay. Wait, say that again?
The structure itself was $8,000.
Okay, okay.
It goes along with it as an addition.
Okay, Mike's handing out concrete work. He's still here. No, thank you guys again. This is awesome.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Volunteers like yourselves in Polk City, the city of this, thank you.
So we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, Public Comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Have we had anyone contact us, Jenny, about speaking?
No, sir.
Haven't, then, so we'll move on to Item 7, which is Consent Items, and I'll ask for a motion, please, to approve.
Second.
And roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
You did it. Anderson?
I went on a turn, so I'm not sure.
I know, I did that, I'm sorry.
I'm kidding, I'm just teasing, yes.
And Walters?
Yes.
Have it, sorry.
Okay, so we'll move on to Item 8, Business Items. A, Fire Station Remodel Project, and Cory, I guess you're coming forward.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, my name is Cory Sharp. I'm an architect and project manager with FDH Design. You know, in our work session earlier today, we talked about the City Hall project, but as you know, we also have another project going on, planning for the renovation of your existing fire department. Over the last month, month and a half, we've gone through a pretty rigorous bidding process where we opened up all of our documents that we put together to any public contractor that wished to bid on them.
I think it shows off.
Yeah. Okay, well, anyway, I'll try and summarize. We had a, what I would consider, very successful bidding period. We had a pre-bid meeting at the fire department that could barely hold all the people in the community room that came and attended them. I've never seen anything like it, to be quite honest, so that was really positive. On bid day, we had a total of seven contractors bid on the project. For this type of project, I would normally see maybe four or five, so I was very excited that we looked at seven bidders. The bids ranged on the base bid side between $1,105,000 to $1,274,000. We felt that that's a really tight group of bids, so we're very excited to see that. And today, we're proposing to you all to approve the AIA A101, Standard Agreement Form for Approval of Construction Contract for GTG Construction, in the base bid amount of $1,105,000, as well as alternate number 1, in the amount of $66,000, which includes the addition of a station alerting system. You happy to answer any questions?
Yeah, any questions, Cory?
Probably jumping ahead. Can't find bid alternate that we're adding in there. What was that for?
Alternate ones for the addition of a station alerting system, so this project has three alternates?
Yeah. There you go. We're in the discussion now, but thank you, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to 8A1, Resolution 2023-14, Adopting Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Opinion of Probable Construction Cost. I'll ask for a motion, please. And roll call?
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item 2 then, Resolution 2023-15, Awarding Construction Contract to GTG Companies in the Amount of $1,171,000. Motion, please?
Second.
And roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
And then Item 3, Resolution 2023-16, Approving Construction Contract and Bond to GTG in the Amount of $1,171,000. Motion, please?
So move.
Second.
And roll call?
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Okay, moving on to Item B, Resolution 2023-05, Setting Public Hearing on the Proposed FY24 Maximum Property Tax Levy. Chelsea, you want to speak to that, and Cory have a motion?
Yes. Tonight, I am asking the council to set the public hearing for the fiscal year 24 maximum property tax levy. So to reiterate this, this is a newer requirement in the state of Iowa within the last few years, but it's an additional step that we have to take before we approve and adopt our budget for the upcoming fiscal year. So the maximum property tax levy is the maximum tax levy that you would have for your operating levies. It does not include the debt service levy. This does not mean that we are necessarily proposing to increase the tax levy, but it sets the maximum for what the tax levy can be for the upcoming fiscal year. So I am asking the council to set the maximum tax levy for $9.75 per 1,000. As of right now, we do have the budget almost completed. For the most part, nothing has changed from our work session that we had two weeks ago, but I'm asking the council to set that max tax levy a little bit higher to just evaluate if the state legislature does do, does pass some bill in the upcoming month that we have the flexibility to reassess the tax levy for the fiscal year 2024. So the tax levy does not mean it's the final tax levy, it's the maximum amount that it can be for the upcoming fiscal year, and I do need the council to set it for that dollar amount because it does have to be in the publication notice.
Yeah, so we're setting a public hearing, but we're essentially establishing that maximum rate?
Yes.
Which is not the actual rate?
Yes.
Which is a new requirement as of, I know you all said this a little bit ago. So, and we talked about this, so I'm okay deferring to the recommended course of action here. It does concern me with this added step that we're essentially publishing a rate that is higher than what we plan to execute for the segment of the population that pay attentions to articles and stated rates, and does the work to calculate those, which I think is a group, but is a group nonetheless. It kind of inflates what we're doing, I should say. It overstates, again, our plans. I do think your logic about in case legislation comes, which it probably will this year, they've said as much, it allows us flexibility, but again, folks are gonna see a maximum, and I know some other communities are starting to do this, but folks are gonna see a maximum rate and assume that's what it is because that's, there was no difference between the maximum rate and the actual rate in the past. So, again, I think what we're doing here is the right thing. It does, like I said, concern me a little that, the difference between those two.
Well, I believe we've done this once before, way, way back. We were probably still in grade school, but, and we did that for emergency purposes. It wasn't required, but it was when we were really having serious water problems. I said we could if needed, if I remember sort of.
So that's good to hear, that there is...
Is that valid for mayor to anybody else?
And again, I think that the same thing here applies here. A skeptic in the audience, talking about the government, talking about taxing entities is, yeah, say whatever you want, and, you know, without notice, we could do some things. Again, that's not the intention here, that's not the plan, but...
It was a very hard sell at that time, and I'm proud to say we didn't have to do it.
So just to walk you all through the budget process step, you'll set the max tax levy hearing tonight for February 27th. You'll have that public hearing that evening. February 27th, you will also set the public hearing for the actual budget approval. We'll approve the final budget March 13th.
And so, just to get to brass tacks, because I've been rambling for quite a while, I don't even know that I understand what I just said, but trying to explain where I'm going, it is important that our plans right now are to maintain the existing levy rate that we have, i.e. no property tax increase for this next fiscal year, despite the fact that we're gonna publish a rate that would be an increase. Our intention, like you said, is not to have that.
It's got me.
And that's another thing that's hard to explain to.
I know.
Because we've done that in the past, kept the mileage rate where it is, and the county comes in and reassesses, and everybody says, well, if you didn't raise it, how come our taxes?
And assessments are gonna come out. They're not gonna apply to this year that we're talking about here, but again, that's... Invent, find something that's more convoluted than property taxes in Iowa. You won't. It's just the way it is, but that's not something that will probably change, nor is it something we have control over, so...
So then, can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
And roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Vogel? Yes.
Moving on then to Item C, McClure Engineering Standard Agreement for Consulting Services in the Amount of $374,000 for the Polk City Elevated Storage Tank Project. We'll hear from Gary first.
You, Mayor, Council, as you probably recall, at the last council meeting and work session, we went through, did a presentation on kind of the alternatives to consider. We presented our recommendation at that time. It's our understanding that the council's in agreement to move forward with that one and a half gallon storage tower, the 16-inch connection off of the Des Moines feeder, and then that eight-inch connection into, I forget the street, but up near the school and the connection there. So that's what the proposal is for the design agreement that you see in front of you. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions or provide any clarifications off of our discussion from this work session.
Counsel, anything? Okay, thank you, Gary. We'll ask for a motion to approve Item C.
Second, and I did think of our shit now. No, sit down.
I needed to get my steps in.
It may be for Chelsea as much as for you, so what's kind of the communication timeline on our plans here, or do we know that yet, in terms of just talking about what we're doing, the, you know, the existing tower coming down, plans for where?
That one we can sometime, like we talked about previously, as far as that'll stay in service, and there'll be a time in the future when maintenance needs basically identify that it's essentially, the cost to maintain the tower is no longer cost feasible to continue the operation of that smaller facility.
Right. So, good point. The execution of the plan that we're laying out now is down the road, but to the extent that the public reaction to the plan, we want to allow for that, so I just didn't know if there was, I think there's a lot of excited people about water towers out there.
Well, we went through the schedule last time, and is that kind of what you're getting at, is what is our schedule for moving forward at this point in time? When will we see design construction, that sort of thing?
That I get it.
Okay.
I remember seeing, like, communication or targeted information about to the public. I don't know if we had plans for that. We're on the line.
Is there a newsletter?
We do have a newsletter, yes.
We'd be happy to put together, yeah, absolutely. We'd be happy to put together kind of, this is what we're moving forward with, this is the general timeframe that we have for this project, you know, where the location is gonna be and how that ties into the new sports complex, et cetera, et cetera, so we'd be happy to help the city draft something in that respect as well, too.
Like a cell phone number?
Yep, yeah, yeah. I thought you guys had that on the website.
I give it all of a sudden.
Gary, we typically, for major projects, have like a open house type thing where the public can come. We can, we can talk about that in the schedule, so...
I think it'd be good to probably do that as we're getting... I think it'd be good to probably do that as we're getting closer towards, you know, like into the final, towards the final design side of things, because then we're going to have better renderings and that sort of thing, that'll actually show something that's, I think, more tangible to folks as the, as a sports complex and where that's going to be going at, so that would make more sense, but we'd be happy to do it whenever you guys would like, we've done those utilities as well, so. Absolutely.
His question led to a question.
You bet.
And that question is, just so that I'm clear, the old water tower isn't shut off the minute the new water tower starts up?
That's not the intention right now, no, absolutely not, so that would stay in service for a period of time, because it is, it is providing service to the city, now again, when you're building a water tower, it's a long life asset, just like the, the one that's been in existence, and I have the date and I can't remember what it is, but it's. Yeah, so it's been in service for approximately, what, 40, 40 some years, they're a long life asset, and so, again, the intention is that would stay in service for a period of time, allow you guys to continue to provide service from that for, as the town continues to grow, and then when the time comes for that fully repaired, which is typically for a tower like that, it would be taking it down out of service, complete recoding of the system, coating systems are fairly expensive, those, at that point in time in the future, you would probably elect to, to say it's not worth, well, the lifecycle asset that we went through last time, it's not worth repainting this one at this point in time, we'd remove that one from service and start planning long-term for where that next tower will go.
Yeah, so I.
I hope I answered that question right, was that what you were asking?
You did, but I thought we were to the point where we needed to do some work on the old tower.
We've deferred painting a couple of years.
Some exterior, I think exterior type work, yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a, I mean, we have some discretion on, at what, I mean, it's not going to be a.
It's not, it's not going to, it's not going to.
We're going to cross a line.
It's not going to start leaking out of there tomorrow, you're not going to have, you know, water spouts coming off of it tomorrow by any means, but again, long-term, typically you'll have an out exterior, because the exterior is, is more apt to wind and other things that are going to have, you know, it's going to erode the coatings that are on that over time, but over time, typically you have to do drain downs, and then there's, there are times that, depending upon how the coating system interior is actually looking as well, that you may have to do like a full interior and exterior recoding, it's not uncommon, that happens every 15 to 20 years, and they're, they're fairly expensive, so that would be when we would like looking at something where we'd say, it's just not, it doesn't make financial sense at this point in time, and now that we have our other asset, we have the volume, we're no longer, is this necessary? It doesn't, doesn't, the plan right now doesn't pigeonhole you into saying it has to go down tomorrow, if that makes sense.
Yeah, to, to me, it's a function of what budget year does it make sense, given whatever else project is happening here.
And how the town continues to grow over the next five or 10 years, that sort of thing, it's going to probably help the city.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Absolutely.
We just need roll call, don't we?
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel? Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to item D, Snyder and Associates Engineering Services Agreement in the amount of $18,000 for the 2023 street repair project. Anything, Travis?
No, just for your consideration today, the annual installment of street maintenance is part of the Public Works budget, we're going to identify 10 to 12 areas that are in biggest need of repair, aiming for a total construction budget somewhere in the ballpark of $100,000. And then we will work with Public Works, our intent is to have plans and specifications for your consideration for speeding.
Okay, thank you, Travis, I'll ask for a motion to approve, please.
So move.
And roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Moving on to item E, third reading of ordinance 2022-2600, amending chapter 165.18 zoning regulations off-street parking. Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
And then item F, Snyder and Associates, December 2022, Engineering Services invoicing the amount of $18,680.75. Motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So we'll move on to item number nine, reports and particulars, I'll ask, anybody, staff, anything to report? Mike is looking down. Okay, all right, thank you very much, Chelsea, anything?
No.
Council?
I'd just like to say to Mike, I've got a lot of reports on storm removal, all good.
Good, I'll pass that on. One thing for me, well, two things, I'm excited to move ahead with the fire department project, and Godspeed, Carla, managing calls for the next however long it's going to be, even more fun, is as least intrusive as it can be, knowing that that's probably not the actual, but I saw on social media, and I'm stealing Carlos' thunder a little bit, but Steve Noack was the firefighter of the year.
Dedicated member.
Dedicated member of the year, and Steve, how long has Steve been on, Jamie, do you know? Twenty, okay, so if it's 22, that means when I joined, he was a seven-year veteran, and I joined a long time ago, so I love seeing, I shouldn't say that way, whoever gets it, earns it, and I love seeing that regardless, but seeing Steve of, of my ilk hanging with the young bucks is pretty cool, especially the number of hours, and, you know, Jamie's super involved, so obviously the Noacks are bringing up the curve for everybody in town on volunteerism, dedication, so I just wanted to recognize Steve a, a little bit further, and if there's other zip, it's cool to see, good job, Steve.
Anybody else?
I'll just give a public thanks to everybody that participated in, attended to, or donated to all the things for the Community Foundation Gala fundraiser, it was a great event, haven't heard for sure results or anything, but I know a lot of work went into that, so thanks to anyone that was involved or contributed to that.
Okay, thanks. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, we are adjourned to.